I move that we give city administrator Roden a 60-day notice to terminate his contract.
You move by councilman Richard to give Minister Roden a 60-day notice to terminate his contract. It's your second?
I move it's second by councilman Richard, first by Peterson.
Any further discussion?
I just want to say I can't support that as I see a bunch of progress in the city that's happening and I think that city administrator Roden has been doing a good job in executing his duties. So I'm not wanting to support that.
I agree with that. Mandy, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Richard?
Yes.
Guevar?
No.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Audi?
No.
Miller?
No.
We have a tie vote and as a matter of fact, I'll break the tie. I vote no. Next item on the agenda is adjourned. You move by councilman Audi that we voted for Miller. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vows. We are adjourned. We're now in the work section. Katie, do you have anything?
Uh, no.
Thank you. Glenn, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Further. Do we want to go down and catch the city bike signage rules? Some of these people have been waiting a long time. I would like to give them their opportunity to talk. If you want to come up with a address.
Thank you very much for bumping us up.
My name is Chad Lorenz. This is where my wife Laura Lorenz. We are conservative citizens of Boyd. Thank you.
Everybody see it? Kind of go back and forth here. Each have separate parts. So we're here basically about pedestrian safety in Mitchell County and how we can all work together to make our roads and streets more safe for our active citizens. In 2012, the hospital and health department performed a community health assessment. Basic numbers, 500 surveyed. Responses were confidential. 151 responded at 30.2% response rate. Of those responses, 82% of people are physically active three times plus a week. 92% feel Boyd values physical activity. 52% feel Boyd is challenged by the absence of sidewalks, walkways, and paths. 68% feel conditions of sidewalks hinder activity. Since 2012, our population has grown. More citizens and families seeking physical activity options through biking, walking, and outdoors running activities. So what is reality? Roads and streets are used for both motor vehicles, bikes, and pedestrians. More and more of our population have an interest in active lifestyle, including active transportation, which includes biking, walking, or running. And with the increase, safety and planning is needed to protect all the people on roadways. Um, Chad, you want to start here?
I don't know if you guys know who Brian Hillenrath. I'm sure if you've been to SNF Drug, you've met him. And I don't know if you heard about what happened to him last year around this time. He was cycling. He was actually preparing for the annual Bike Across Kansas. I'm not sure if you guys are aware of what that is, but every year, there's a large group of people that ride from the Colorado border all the way to the Missouri border. It takes him about a week to do it. It's a really awesome activity. People meet new friends and it's a lot of fun. Anyways, he was trying to prepare himself for the distances on each of those days. They can range anywhere from oh, 40 miles on up to 80 miles a day. So he decided to go out on a route in our county that was approximately 35 miles. Went out around, I think across the Glen Elder Dam into Glen Elder and was coming back to Boyd on Highway 24 when he was struck by a vehicle while he was on the road. Now, the law states that bicyclists have every right to be on the road along with motor vehicles. The problem is, is I think a lot of times, people aren't aware that that is the law and that they need to share the road with us. We don't have the area or the space to maybe do bike lanes for us. So we just need to be more cautious about people that are active, that want to be out on the roads and experience an active lifestyle of cycling, running, walking, and whatnot. But, yeah.
So that's his story. And he would be here tonight, but he doesn't have permission to tell this story.
So signage. We use it for all sorts of different reasons. These are two excellent signs that are in our county that, I mean, every time I drive into the county and I see these signs, it makes me proud to be a part of Mitchell County. I think it explains a lot of our character. Explore, dream, live. I mean, why not explore, dream, and live on bicycle in Mitchell County? Every step is a destination. I say every pedal stroke is a destination. Other signage that we use, just public awareness. We have a hospital sign pointing people in the direction to let them know where the hospital is. We have a yield ahead sign. We are warning people that there is a yield ahead. So we're warning people of a sign ahead. So let's warn people of bicyclists ahead. Once again, more warning signs. We have warning signs for deer. You know, let's warn people of human beings that are potentially on the road. Not necessarily just an animal that's on the road. And also, we have signs there along our highways indicating that there is a railroad and there are several of these along our highways. And that railroad doesn't move. A cyclist does. They're constantly moving along the highways. And I think we need to make people aware of that. There is a sign of, it's actually down in, just outside of Heston, Kansas, where the county has come in and actually had these signs designed for them. And it's a very simple sign. It says three feet. It has a vehicle and a bicyclist with a arrow in between them. And then simply saying that it's the law for a motor vehicle to give three feet of space while they're passing a bicyclist along any roadway.
And these are simply some of the statutes. There's a lot to read, basically in red or the main points. Every person riding a bike shall be granted all the rights and shall be subject to all the duties applicable to the driver of the vehicle by this act. Another one, every person operating a bicycle or a moped upon a roadway at less than normal speed of traffic at the time and place and under the conditions than existing shall ride as near to the right side of the roadway as practical. That's another law that a lot of people don't know is that bikes should be riding on the right side of the roadway. And then this is the main one with the sign is that Chad just talked about. Driver of the vehicle overtaking a bicycle proceeding in the same direction shall pass to the left thereof at a distance of not less than three feet and shall not again drive to the right side of the roadway until safely clear of the overtaken bicycle. This is why I think signs are important. That's my little girl. She's seven. She loves to ride her bike in this town. And for no other reason, why not our kids? We were doing the safe routes to school. Why not make some safe roads for our kids to ride their bikes to school? Because I would really like her to be able to ride the bike to school every day and not have to worry if something's going to happen to her because someone's not paying attention.
And so today, we're coming to you. I've got a letter here that I'd like to pass around and let you guys read. We have already contacted and met with the county commissioners. What we're proposing is to put up signs along our highways, along our county roads that are more popular for the cyclists in our area and also throughout the city. They've already agreed to contact KDOT. That's what that letter is for. To have them install signs along their, and this is just an example of what we would like to see. Something that just simply says, you know, state law, share the road, you know, give us three feet, you know, be respectful to us. You know, just as the same as if we were a motorcycle and you were passing us. So we're asking you to sign that, to send off to KDOT, to help emphasize the need for these signs in our county. And that's really all that letter there is for. But we're also coming to you today and we've got a map here that we've just kind of roughed out of what we would like to do is throughout the city streets, we would like to put these painted signs along the roads. And what this, this sign right here is called a share road. And it's to share the road. Alls it is, is to make the public aware that on these busier roads, busier intersections, when you're, when you see a bicycle, share the road with them. Pass them carefully. Give them their three feet because they have to be riding on the road. There's no sidewalks. There's no pathways designated for bicycles. So we want our kids, we want our family members, our, you know, not just kids, but we want everybody to be out there active. Our parents, our grandparents. Let's get out on a bike and, I mean, it's easy on the joints. It's a fun activity to do. But we also just need to be safe about it and warn people that we're there and to do the right thing. So I guess, do you have any questions as far as? What's that?
On the road, it's usually white.
On the road, it's white. Yes.
And what's, what's the other one?
The other one there, that is the specifications.
The template?
The template.
Of what it would be?
For that sign.
Oh, for that one? Okay, I thought that was an action sign.
No.
No, that's just the template, which I believe, I mean, you could take a piece of plywood and a jigsaw and cut it out. I mean, it doesn't seem like it would be that difficult to me. And then simply a roller and some white paint and, and we're not asking to change anything. I mean, it's already a law for us to share the road. It's just emphasizing and people that aren't from our community, when they come in, they'll see these signs and, you know, realize that there's, this is an active community. And we just need to be watching out for those individuals that want to be active and want to be out there on their bicycles and ride safely.
Do you have a question?
Sure.
With this plan, but I'm not a cyclist.
Sure.
My question is, as a motorist, are you going to go as extensively to teach all ages of people that are riding in bicycles what the rules are that they're supposed to follow? Because I see a lot of bicyclists going right down the middle of the road.
We had talked about this, about putting articles in the paper saying, you know, if these things start happening, you know, use of the laws. And these are rules educating motor vehicleists as well as educating bicyclists. Even putting together a public forum, saying, everybody come, we want to let everybody know the rules.
As a vehicle on the road, they have to obey the same rules as the car does.
Yes.
Stop signs, yield signs.
I think it's great proofing. I've got a little upcoming bicyclist too. And it's really nice having this in for me.
Well, I think the thing we failed to mention with the KDOT signs was, KDOT puts those signs up. They provide those signs along the highways. They provide those. So that's what that letter is basically saying. You just, the process is saying, we're asking you, we have the support from the county and the city. We could have just gone county, but we wanted this to be county and city-wide support.
I figure the more people that are asking KDOT to do this, the better chance we have of them proceeding.
Cutting in, saying, yeah, we'll put up those signs for you.
Or the county.
The county has already asked me to get quotes for them to put up. And they want signs along county roads. They're already in favor of doing it. They think it's a need because there are a lot of, you know, people out on those roads, a lot of semis and things like that that, you know, we, we as cyclists and the semi-drivers need to be aware of each other. I mean, we all know who's going to win if.
A semi and cyclist meet.
So if we have signage out there along these heavier bicycled, blacktop roads, hopefully that will slow the semi-drivers down or motor vehicleists down a little bit and just have them watch it for us a little bit more.
Yeah, are you guys looking at particular routes?
Well, what I did is I put this map together and I asked a few individuals that I know cycle and we just kind of discussed different roads that we tend to travel on ourselves. One is K Road or people call it the Tipton Blacktop is one of the favorite. The West Main or Henry Trail or whatever, whichever that you want to call that. Along the Glen Elder Dam Road or Glen Lane, 130th Road or the Cocker City Causeway. Over here around Simpson and Asherville, there's a couple of blacktop roads. One that goes south of Simpson and one that goes south of Asherville there that a few cyclists tend to ride their bikes on. And then also Highway 24 is pretty popular. But I did put in Highway 14 as well, just because I want people that are entering the county from all directions to know that there could be a potential cyclist on that road. I mean, what would be awesome is to see more cyclists come out. Once they, once they see this, maybe they'll feel a little bit more safe to get out on the roads, a little more comfortable with some more public awareness. I know I've talked to a lot of people that say, well, they don't think it's safe to be out on the roads. Well, you know, I guess that's an opinion, but maybe what we need to do is make the public more aware of us so that you do feel safe. You know, if, yeah, I don't know. That's just how I think, I guess. Let's fix why it's not safe to be out on those roads. So let's make them aware.
Say you have a safety education for little kids?
I don't have anything like that, but I mean, I think that would, that would not be a bad idea to do like crazy.
I see these little types about five years old riding down Main Street. It's scary to do.
Yeah, I understand. I understand totally.
And that's, it would be, again, kind of with all these things in place, more and more ideas have been brought to us where it's like, you know, maybe some public education on both sides.
Yeah, we need to get their parents to teach them, you know, don't just ride down the middle of the street. You know, ride as close to the curb as you possibly can. Now granted, if there's a car parked on the curb, they're going to have to go around that car, you know, and being a small kid, that would be difficult to see, but we just need to be watching for them. And hopefully the parents are putting some reflective, you know, gear on them, on their bicycles. Put a red flashing light on their, on their seatpost. You know, you can pick those up just about any cyclist shop or Walmart or wherever and they just, they flash and you can see them from long ways away, especially at night.
Well, we're pretty lucky here because I think people are very conscious of watching for kids, especially at school.
Yes, but, yeah.
But it is scary to see.
Yeah, I agree.
So in the end, this is going to be a cost to the city for making and acquiring the signs and that's something that we're going to have to figure out, working into a budget is just a basic question.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, we will, you know, we'll do what we need to do to try and help that out as much as possible if we have to do fundraisers or what to. I don't, I guess I don't know what your guys' budget is and honestly, I can't imagine the paint and stencil costing an arm and a leg by any means.
The man hours might go into that depending on where you want them and how many of them are painted.
Sure. And I have a feeling that if that was an issue, that there would be volunteers that would be willing to help paint those. I'd be one of those.
Should we just give you a piece of plywood?
Hey, if that's what it takes, yeah, I'll cut it. I'll put it down by myself if that's what it takes.
I got a dick call.
All right, fair enough.
I think it's a great deal.
Yeah, it is.
I think that one and the bicycle education. I know you got the safety. I like to, when I'm traveling down the highway and those bikers have that high visibility colors that, I mean, you actually see them. Yeah.
Yeah.
It scares me.
Oh, yeah. I mean, myself too, being a cyclist when I'm driving and I see another bicyclist. I mean, I'm probably overcautious sometimes because I'll, I'll slow way down and I'll have people get up on my rear end and I'll get way over or around them in the other lanes just because I know how they feel when they're on that road and have somebody just sit right by them. Because I've, I've been along 24 highway and had semis just, they probably gave them three feet, but honestly, three feet really is not much. And when you have a semi.
It's three feet from you and it's three feet from the side of the road.
Three feet from me, from the bicyclist. Yeah, it's, it's not very far.
I have a question for Katie.
Yes?
With this, what, do we need ordinance? Do we need ordinances to do this signage? Do we need, what do we need?
Yeah, probably similar to your snow route ordinance, something like that.
And will all that signage have to be marked on some kind of a map so we know where it is?
Well, it wouldn't be on a map. You'd have to specifically list.
Streets, like a route?
So what, I guess what I've got here is, you can see the X's is where I propose where we would paint the signs on, are all these X's. Which I forgot to count up. And then the blue squares would be all the entrances into the city is where I'm proposing the same sign that we would have along the counties and along the highways. Just as people are entering, they would see this and hopefully they would under, you know, combine the two.
Get the two together.
Bring the two together.
What about your previous bank?
And that's, that's where the X's are.
That's where the X's are.
That's where the painting is.
It would just be painted. There wouldn't be any signposts.
That would be more on the like outskirts of town, the signs.
Put them on the street sign, you know, or says pine and water.
Oh, or who would have to just on?
Oh, just add them to the street signs themselves. I suppose we could do that. I didn't figure that anybody would want to have that many signs on one post.
What do they click about what? Putting these signs, any signs on your street marker signs?
Mine for just putting a playing card in the spokes and going.
Well, the only thing I was thinking about, people want to go around.
What's a playing card?
Oh, yeah.
You just paint them in the street. That's going to cost you a lot of money to make metal signs to put on poles or something.
Yeah, I think, honestly, I think the painting would be the cheapest or least expensive way to go.
Yeah. Because I think proposed signage actually in the city is less than $10.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
Actually signage and the rest is just paint.
Yeah, the rest is just paint.
I think if you can come and give a number of what your signs are going to cost and come back to us, I think we're very supportive.
To start with, you're asking though that. At some point, we agree to a letter like that.
Yes, to.
Submit to KDOT.
That's, yeah.
That'll have to be like the next council meeting, right?
Yeah, we can get something drawn up.
I'll do some looking. I'm not entirely familiar with the, what you call it, a share?
Shareo.
A shareo.
Yeah.
I mean, we're not really creating a bike path, so to speak, or a bike lane. And the other sign is already state law, so I'll do some checking to see what we need as far as an ordinance.
There's some resources we could provide to Katie in terms of some in counties and cities that have created a shareo program that could give you some references.
I know Manhattan and Lawrence both have those sharos along their roads.
I have a question. Is it, are you, are you giving us your, we would like a shareo, but we prefer a bike lane, but you don't think you're going to get a bike lane? What's your preference? What would you prefer, a bike lane or a shareo?
Oh, I mean, if, if the money was out there, the bike lanes would be the way to go.
Trail systems.
But honestly, I couldn't ask you guys for something like that because that would be astronomical because you would have to widen all of the roads to give us the three-foot path for the specific bike lane.
Streets in town are already wide enough, aren't they? I mean, like if there's a path going through, let's say.
I don't necessarily, I don't necessarily think that they are wide enough because especially when you've got parking along the street because you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to have parking along that side of the street. Yeah, and, yeah, I just, I think that would, granted, that would be awesome. Don't get me wrong, but just realistically, at this point, I don't think that that would be the best idea for the city.
I think something that.
I think just like two vehicles, a bicycle, a week at the same time on these streets would be more.
Yeah. That would be something, sorry, the public health person has to.
Yeah, that'll go on in.
I'm trying not to, but something that we support and you guys doing your comprehensive plan work, when we're looking into the future and we're looking into building and redoing new streets, to think about that in a comprehensive plan process. So that we're building for the future and for health in our community and the active living citizens that want to live that way. So that's what we highly recommend on that, in your comprehensive plan.
So I guess, would you guys be willing to sign that letter for us to send into KDOT? Oh, okay. I guess, I get, oh, at the next meeting. Oh, you can't.
We're all four of them can do. Could you bring us all your real names at the next meeting so we can prove it all?
We have the quotes and everything by then.
Yeah, I can work on trying to get some quotes by then.
That way we can get it all done for you.
Okay.
And you all have been invited to the Aware Luncheon this Thursday at the Tech College, which we'll talk a lot more about this and we'll get a lot more publicity to it too. So there'll be more in-depth information, I think, on that as well and some things there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back to the front yard parking ordinance. We'll go back to the front yard parking ordinance.
Sorry if I seem preoccupied on my phone, I was trying to track down the ordinance. Yes, this has been brought up a couple times and kicked it around and I guess I just decided finally to do this, try this. So this is just a suggestion of a front yard parking ordinance. It's completely up for discussion and obviously needs some editing. I see in section two, I've got a problem with section numbers. So what this is, this proposal is, the parking in front yards, front yards is defined as the area between a structure and a road. The only parking that would be allowed would be on a permitted driveway.